Yeah.
Okay, shall we start?
Yeah, so um in here separated out is the latest newest greatest version um cleaned up by council of the uh proposed changes to the town for the bargain by tree presentation.
Yes.
Obviously known as the tree bank. What we got here is our further comments and suggestions from the ERB meeting last night Steve Coleman prepared a little cover memo it's on page eighteen of your packet. Let's see it's been reviewed twice for the by the ERB uh once by the conservation board um I am going to suggest that the board um take a look at the changes that have been made I was hoping that we could set a public hearing tonight it would be for um April tenth. Um it's going to be uh referred over to both the Newcastle planning board the Westchester County Planning Board uh statutorily we need to give them thirty days to come back for a comment.
Mm-hmm.
So uh April thirtieth will not be sufficient time so we open the meeting open the hearing on the tenth and also give people an opportunity to come back two weeks later. But um as it's got a lot of changes and expansion in the um I guess uses or the appropriate uses for the tree bank um diversifying trees shrubs um soils irrigation watering anything that would be conducive to um helping the plant grow and be maintained. We want some given to hopefully uh passed into law by end of week by end of March which is upside down that's fine. Okay um so we'll be asking for an authorization to set the public hearing and then um we'll circle it around and any other comments um will be welcome.
Shall we reach so I'm sorry.
No you you started.
Um so I mean there's some things I don't know if now is the form or we can just do this during the public hearing but so for example I don't recall why we were getting rid of the significant tree list. Um where certain trees have value for other reasons irrespective of size um if I just want to address that again.
Um okay um maybe.
It's probably Steve Coleman.
Yeah so I so yeah we need him.
Well I was gonna say so for our so for our public hearing maybe Steve Coleman maybe a couple members of the ERB to come in.
Yes that's fine. That's fine. Besides some questions that you can help answer.
Okay.
Yeah definitely.
I think it was that one doesn't exist and so it was sort of like it's codified and we don't we don't have one so.
But exactly. We don't have one.
But that doesn't mean we shouldn't have one necessarily just chill.
That's right that's right that's right. Great.
That was the explanation last night.
Is it something is something that we should have and create.
Yeah.
Yeah.
This isn't like totally related to this but it's sort of related. The Chapua Crossing remember when we were approving it I don't know the exact language but we said they need to put robust screening of trees and and shrubbery.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
You know along Roanoke Road.
Mm-hmm.
Who is going to supervise that from our end and make sure that it's what they're gonna do is going to fulfill those obligations?
Um the planning board approves the planting plans with Steve Coleman?
Because.
Right but I think yeah but who but I think Steven does the inspections afterwards as well. Is that that's your question I think right?
Yeah because I mean right right now I know it's premature but the amount of things that they knocked down and the
Oh.
visibility of the buildings already and I know
Yeah.
they haven't made really the roadway yet and they're you know it's obviously a construction site but I'm just I'm just concerned.
So maybe when Steve is here for public hearing or for number workshop we can ask him to address that and I'll ask him in the meantime also.
Is that.
I believe it would be Steve who would do that.
Specific to Chapua Crossing or sort of purpose of the.
Well that was it was and that's just kind of as we're looking at this it's triggering it just reminded me that I wanted to do something.
That's a new authority one. I was I was say this that one of the residents from Roanoke Road recently emailed me with concerns I forwarded to Steve they set up a meeting.
Thank you so much I really appreciate it. Oh.
I didn't go into the meeting but I did the resident then emailed Steve and myself and says thank you for meeting with me and addressing my concerns and I
Okay.
thank you for explaining everything to me so he was I think he was accepting everything but he was certainly satisfied.
So Steven is the planning board's senator.
Is that.
Or um just go ahead.
Steven but we should ask Steve just to confirm his process that gets involved in terms of confirming the planting survivability maintenance bond.
Um and also I know from past experience that it would be best if the planting plans were very specific so not um I have seen plans in in the past where you know like the position of trees were laid out
Mm-hmm.
and everybody involved thought that that was going to be the position of the trees and afterwards it was like oh well no that was just sort of like a general representation. I think if the planning board specifies that they want something like you know either staggered or double row you know like in between forever but it's to try to
Right and evergreen and.
Yeah to to make sure that it it's a solid green wall at the end of the day that I think that that needs to it needs to be very specific that that's
Mm-hmm.
that's what needs to be planted and that there isn't room.
Right.
Unless there's a really good reason then it should go back and be changed but it shouldn't be like a concept plan it should be an actual plan.
Right. Right.
So Nick I had sent you that email I don't know if you had time to research it if you even need to research it but when Con Ed takes down trees in the right of way or really anywhere can we require we require them to contribute to the tree fund and why shouldn't they?
Or 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 do the plantings if if they would prefer plants that's fine too.
Right right so I mean my initial off the cuff answer I wouldn't want to research it is that they're not exempt they're not a public authority I mean they're not a municipality they have to pay a right of way fee if they wanna cut the roads open so I would think this law would apply to them as well if you if you adopt it as such. What would mean? But the concern I would have is from a policy perspective is is that going depending upon the fee is that gonna have any impact on their desire or ability to remove trees same that they they'll just defer cutting trees down if they have to pay these fees. Well I think they're gonna just wanna take them down anyway with uh with the damage to their equipment and and the
So it might argue you're petty wise pound foolish.
the tax they get.
But wouldn't those trees be exempt under this anyway because they'd all be deemed hazardous I mean you don't have to pay into the tree bank fund if it's hazardous.
But hazardous to what their equipment though. It's not hazardous to.
Hazardous maybe a healthy tree.
I mean we call how you define hazardous.
It could be a healthy tree hazardous to me is kind of.
Well hazardous hazardous we have to combine as by by the condition the vines and location including hazardous.
That's actually the sign.
They are by the things three of the law.
Yeah.
The tree poses a structural defect or one whose location and or permission poses a force of danger.
So that could be defined as hazardous.
They would they would claim that.
Right.
But the argument is hazardous their equipment which ultimately is hazardous to us because it falls.
Right.
It brings them the wires.
Well I don't know I don't know if it would extend to that I understand what you're saying but unless it's true.
I guess we have to look sometimes they remove a lot more than what you might deem to be hazardous.
Its location poses a foreseeable danger persons or property.
Right I think it would apply.
Persons or property yeah the property is key the property is key.
Yeah.
Yeah. Right.
Right.
Except they were moved sometimes I mean someone does supervise if they're removed it's not like one tree that's overhanging it's the the five back from that too.
Right right.
The truth is also they may if they were willing to do it they they actually may have less pushback from residents who are upset when they take down trees. I mean now if they take down trees I don't think residents will be upset uh in the aftermath of losing power for eleven days but six months yes six years.
But six months to a year.
Yeah.
I think there's somebody here who would beg to differ.
I'm about to say nothing exactly.
Well everybody's entitled to their opinion but there's certainly a lot of people who um you know don't like having their power wrapped and.
There's gotta obviously has to be some way to.
Correct that balance.
Yeah there's a balance.
Yeah there's absolutely there's definitely a balance but you know you heard about it during the storm people were on Facebook saying oh they need to chop down some of these trees.
Yeah but that's also that's your gut there's some people just you know you're angry in in the heat of the moment.
Well it is it is a problem it is a big brain I mean you don't have to take down the whole tree but there's a lot of branches that need to be trimmed um.
Right but just cuz a tree is near a utility line doesn't mean it needs to come down.
I know but there's gigantic there's a gigantic branch that's sitting over the line.
And most of the trimming.
Oh yeah well you know there's the the problem is is that there are ex ex there's a continuum you know so there when they you know come around they say oh we're you know we're trimming the trees to to you know keep your lights on it's like modest trimming but that's the same flyer they sent around when they did U S ten several years ago and they were not just trimming they were
Uh yes right.
trimming.
If you call that trimming that's quite a heavy handed deforestation is the word that comes to mind I it was a little heavy handed on the on the on the trim it's just everything about it was just
deforestation.
you you couldn't have created a better scenario anyway but um you know these are all really good comments and and I'd like them to be answered and addressed during the public hearing so we can create the record and have some of the answers so I invite Steve Coleman to come to the tenth um I'm hoping since I gave enough we were giving enough.
Can I just ask can this cover memo there's a reference to a hearing of an appeal that was from the Mano Sherians when the tree was cut down at the Sunshine Home and that that was before the ERB and as a result of the conversation of the ERB they thought that additional changes should be made to the appeals language in here.
Mm-hmm. Yep. Mm-hmm. Yeah they may wanna revisit it but I would just.
I don't know I haven't had any conversations with Steve about that.
Okay.
For Eric I think.
Uh just the the memo didn't sort of explain what what that meant or what came through.
I cuz I don't know about that and I didn't have time to go back and watch it so.
Yeah.
So we'll find out.
Okay.
Victoria.
Okay um.
Uh Victoria's gonna say something.
Um I just wanted to provide one quick clarification
Mm-hmm.
that um the conservation board actually just did a very cursory review at our last meeting in February
Oh.
with the expectation that there would be another meeting to go into a deeper dive so Steve just kind of took us quickly through it and we had a lot of other things on the agenda.
Mm-hmm.
So you're seeing a version that really doesn't include a lot of the substantive input that the conservation board would be giving and you have like five people who attended our meeting who are very engaged and want to give input so I certainly don't wanna delay the timing of
Okay.
Yeah.
the process but if you could give us a chance to have that meeting and give you a revised draft somehow that'd be.
We'll refer to it.
Well it's our next meeting the hearing doesn't start until April tenth.
So you certainly need a meeting before then right?
Okay.
So but you would probably you would wanna distribute it disseminate it before the public hearing if you could just give me the date you're aiming for so we can make sure to get get you.
We're not we're not voting it even if we're on April tenth even if we.
So. With.
We're opening public hearing in September.
No we're setting we're okay so we're setting comments you could incorporate at the public hearing.
So. Exactly right. Right well oh is that what you're thinking?
Right okay so let me let me back up.
Really?
It's the same as regular residents I'm just thinking would the conservation board be able to give input into this draft you know.
Okay so so let me let me back let me back up a little bit so we were what we were going to do is set the public hearing for April tenth.
I don't know.
This is going um when it when the public hearing gets set tonight it's getting set with a referral to both the planning board and of our our planning board town Newcastle Planning Board
Town Planning Board.
and Westchester County Planning Board the law requires that I give them thirty days to give us comments so we will not be closing the hearing on the tenth but I wanted I assumed that people would be interested in it so we wanted to give people the opportunity to have more than one public hearing date to comment.
Right I understand.
So we would not be closing the public hearing until the twenty fourth at the earliest because I have to be able to give the planning boards thirty days to respond.
Right I'm just hoping that the draft you circulate to the planning board could include the conservation board's deep dive cuz it doesn't right now.
Just as the. No it's it's going it's going to be this one.
What is the rush on it in other words we I'm just just obviously you can imagine if we were looked at the document very preliminary review.
I I.
My my question what is it I mean this what we have now is what Steve went over with the ERB.
Twice and the conservation board on the twenty first so I I I guess I'm a little bit unclear have you not met since the twenty first you haven't met since February twenty first.
We had one again quick look at it which was nice to see it for the first time but we really the expectation was that we would then look at it read it on our own and then meet together.
My 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 response is if it's we're not voting on them in April anyway it's gonna it's going to be put over again regardless so there's gonna be ample opportunity to to.
I guess I guess it just puts us in a position of instead of having the the group of us meet meet together give our feedback and then in a more you know substantive kind of way pass it on to you as an advisory board.
And and then that's what you do. Being still being still what you what you saw when you saw it on the twenty first um and tonight are there major concerns so things that would sort of significantly throw it off track.
There were things intentionally at that meeting that we had that I thought you know what we have too much to do at this meeting I'm not gonna bring it up but they were on in my notes so I guess as a lawyer editor you know I had a lot of notes that I wanted to at least that's and I'm just one person there are four other people who aren't um members as well so.
But nothing prevents you from sharing that now.
Yeah so get your memo together.
Right.
I wasn't ready to share no I just.
No no I mean I mean literally now I don't mean sorry I don't mean that like April tenth or if it gets put over until May the you know May we there's there's ample time to still present all of that.
Okay and we have a town board meeting that started fifteen minutes ago so get your memo get your memo together.
I guess that just it just seems kind of unfortunate in other words another expectation that wasn't met that we really thought could be real.
Well Victoria sometimes it's it's hard to please every single person.
You're right. I know I'm really hoping our voice can be taken seriously.
When are you guys meeting?
It's gonna be it's gonna be taken seriously you're gonna submit a memo you're gonna submit a memo it's gonna be taken seriously.
It's going to be.
Why? I'm trying to tell you though I I want I I'm quite assured.
But then the county won't get to see our our ideas is that right in other words the planning board won't get to know us yet.
You're assuming we're gonna incorporate all your ideas so you don't wanna make that assumption.
No but just for them to hear it they may say oh you know the name.
But this should go to the county that you're.
Send a memo thank thank you.
It's gonna go to the county planning board it's going to go to our planning board.
We look forward to hearing you send your memo.
We just need some more work done we were already giving we're going sometime sit through a few.
Wait wait referring to him.
Okay Victoria thank you very much okay we we have a town board meeting that started fifteen minutes ago.
What the other boards usually do Victoria I think. Wait wait hold on second.
And I said I said my my goal I my intentions are good I don't see why that you can't push back
They get worse they so good.
So just.
the public hearing a bit we right now trees in this town are a major major issue we just lost trees again and we all know there's a lot of education that should be in here for the town there's a lot of pieces in here that are not in here.
So.
Are you talking about the trees that came down in the storm?
Yes.
Victoria.
Those are the trees that you're upset that we lost the ones that took down our power lines?
There's a secret misunderstanding about the benefits of you know if you I don't wanna get into it now but there's a lot of great education that could be part of this um that they're just components that you're just not getting the benefit of hearing the input from the conservation board.
So Victoria two first when are you guys meeting?
Well last week was a total loss so because of everything that happened.
Right.
So when are you meeting?
These are truths.
So we're putting a time on the calendar to meet we haven't put a time on the comment put the.
Okay send us the memo.
Okay so the other thing is the way many what many of our advisory boards do is if we have something like this is we will get a memo where it says this is the you know document that you gave us to review and these are our thoughts and comments and we will get like a pretty um significant memo and comprehensive memo
Very nice.
and then we rely on kind of our lawyers to make sure that those comments get in and you know or what is we think is appropriate to come in
Mm-hmm.
and um and that's how cuz it's sometimes it doesn't work time wise for everyone to have met before it goes you know there are so many moving pieces
I totally get it just an expectation question that I thought
Yeah.
We will definitely keep.
I was already reading before you would get the documents.
Okay.
Right but I think.
Right.
And we will definitely take into account like the memo of the conservation.
Okay thank you thank you very much.
Okay.
But and also just one one last thing I mean I do think there is some exigency to this so the idea of having the new legislation was also to be able to route funding from the tree bank fund to some of the work that's going on downtown so that we're able to make sure that as we are removing trees in order to do the work that's happening downtown that we have sufficient funding and capability to be able to put back more and greater and better and so there is some timeliness to what I think is trying to be done here.
Yeah. Okay. Yes.
I'm really interested to understand what the conservation board's comments are um so you know I think we look forward to seeing that memo and would be open to further revisions on this.
I think. I think it's important to hear from the statutory boards environmental review board the planning board the statutory boards like that as well as the advisory boards at the conservation board.
Definitely.
Right just in case again ERB and the conservation board if you have.
All the boards should have a say whether it's whether statutory or just advisory it doesn't matter.
I don't know why I I feel someone have a positive conversation there's no kind of.
We have a positive conversation I'm saying we wanna hear from all the boards whether they're statutory like the environmental review board and the planning board
Um.
they're gonna have a say and or if it's just an advisory board like the conservation board all the boards are gonna have input when we open the public hearing on April tenth and we have a packed agenda so we need to move on to the next thing.
I understand the the tree ordinance. The tree ordinance is a product of the ERB and the conservation board so you think.
Yes the ERB I know there's statutory board.
Okay so let's focus on that my other suggestion.
Well thank you for your input we have a packed agenda tonight.
Of course I understand in light of all of the tree damage and people's concerns I'm hoping that we can send out in the next supervisor slash administrator
I know.
report a version of and maybe a one page uh people have requested this of us actually a one page quick overview of the rules so that people don't excessively take trees down in the coming weeks because everyone is having a visceral reaction they don't realize that the more trees you take down the more vulnerable the remaining ones are to the wind the less erosion control you have so there are some really practical reasons to keep up as many trees.
Well I think a reminder I think a reminder that maybe can be sent out and we can discuss this is there were regulations
Well hoping by making a my two last reports.
there's regulations that people have to adhere to.
There will be may I ask why?
Absolutely absolutely not no.
Why you don't wanna apply the rules?
Because Rob timeout.
Because I it's you you're it's just your suggestion and I choose not to follow it.
I I.
People's preference.
Well hold on Rob timeout hold on excuse me.
But you're this is a.
Oh I got a good idea what I'll do what I'll do is I'll say to somebody if you're concerned about the trees falling down the wires and having a power failure for another eleven days
Hold on Rob Rob please.
this is the process if you wanna cut down trees I'll definitely do that.
Yes be careful because if if they take down more than three trees I mean this is a very important.
Yeah but I can tell people like if you wanna take down one or two no problem you're allowed to do that without a permit if you wanna take down three trees you're gonna need a permit.
I know you seem to be a big fan of taking down trees.
It's the size of them sometimes even if it's just one sometimes it is.
Right you're not moving fracture I think right I think I think I I I think it should be something.
I don't like your statement to put a little memo together.
Nobody wants power failures right?
Maybe you get to see long eyes to look at that you take the trees down we're gonna have cement all over.
Steve Coleman. Hold on if I'm. But hold on.
Without lights.
I I wish that they're here.
Instead of the back and forth timeout boys.
I just wanna say publicly that I wish the government agency would treat me with respect I am here as a citizen
Can you get Steve to what they to.
please do not demonize me I am your friend I am a citizen there is no reason you should treat me like this and I don't appreciate it it's not appropriate.
Okay. Please please don't yell at me please.
Timeout please both.
Please don't yell at me please don't please don't yell at me Victoria.
Victoria I I mean Victoria I think it's a smart idea and Rob I think it's a smart idea just to send something as part of so there's no flack but of a hysteria if you're gonna take down a tree just please make sure you're well aware of the rules of town.
If the conservation if the if the environmental review board wants to submit something for the newsletter they're more than welcome to even the conservation board can do that
I don't I don't there's anything wrong with that. So please.
if they wanna submit something to newsletter we we would consider it I'm not gonna put in my supervisor report but I do appreciate your recommendation.
I consider there's a lot to ask but I'm.
Let's not it's a let's not go back for it thank you.
Thank you your recommendation.
Okay thank you.
Thank you very much.
I have an authorization to um attend a conference for um Rob Deary GFOA conference. I'm sorry can you repeat just that one? Oh did you want a phone number? It's thirty six. Alright here uh GFOA.
So I'm gonna continue to beat a dead horse on this one so.
I was waiting for it I was waiting for it.
To tell you that the government rate for hotel rooms in Albany is a hundred and fifteen dollars so a two night stay is not three hundred dollars it is definitely nitpicky but I'm just gonna continue to mention it every time I get asked to approve a hundred and fifteen or fifteen and I'm just gonna say it every time I get asked to approve one of these
A hundred and fifty dollars?
that I think that we should be paying our trip requests to the standard government rates for the times.
I think it's a good practice a good idea I mean at at that dollar amount not that it adds up in wasteful dollars but it's.
Okay but I'm I'm sure this is being held at the Albany Marriott and and it's only for New York State GFOA you think that they would be giving us the government rate? So you're gonna make them stay somewhere else in Utah?
Yeah. Nope no.
Just a point for consideration of that practices.
No that that rate is that the rate is available at that hotel it's a hundred and fifteen dollars a night if one request get put together just saying you know I will be staying in Albany New York and the conference hotel and the rate is a hundred and fifteen dollars a night so.
Okay and okay and do we know what?
You know what you would have to ask everyone's why.
Is that is that was originally just asking Rob has to just call up and ask for the government rate?
Well he wrote it's approximately three hundred dollars he didn't say it was three hundred dollars and so I will find out what the taxes and stuff like that I'll.
Right.
Yeah maybe you can ask sometimes the conference rate might be different than the rate that he could just get if he gets the municipal rate. I just know sometimes we go to soccer tournaments and there's a group rate and you think it's the cheapest and then I pass the room and it's I can get it cheaper.
I know just I for forgive me for not not catching the irony of the fact that the New York State GFOA
I know.
annual conferences running is gonna be charged somebody more than what the annual you know rate is.
No actually the the request was the you book the hotel rooms directly with the hotel so.
I I listen to that.
Did you see that right?
I'm not.
I think I think I think it's a good guidance but you know I again we're small you know we're we don't it's not like we have you know ten thousand people traveling every week you know we're small enough that you know if it's a little more than the government rate but they're staying in the same exact places where the convention is it's we're on a case by case basis.
So I would just tell you.
I will mention. Ask it it could be simplified can I have the state plate?
Yeah when you when you call the call when you call the hotel and you check off on triple A or on a senior citizen or you check the box that says government rate
So is that could be simplified so it's do that.
Yeah yeah.
you automatically get that one.
I'm not I'm not saying it shouldn't he definitely wanted to ensure all I'm saying is that these things we don't have that many of them where we can actually look at it on a case by case basis that's what I'm saying.
All.
Because we don't have that many of them it's not like New York City or you know where it's so many.
And and I I just chucked it out.
Alright next.
So the traffic pole for our downtown um this is a proposed change order so what happened was is that well we're getting a a traffic light at the intersection of King and Riley um it is currently galvanized steel in that shiny happy thing. So we were looking for something decorative that would look more in keeping with the decorative poles that we were doing
Yeah. Yes.
so this is what we're looking at I was looking for a photo for you I don't believe we're getting the lights on top it's just the pole.
They had such nicer ones like on the west side highway going down I took a picture once I sent it to Adam.
Can you just do take a look at it because.
They're so nice.
Okay because this one is approved by New York State DOT yeah but that's not it
I'm just wondering my car was. It's just out in the middle of the road.
Yeah but New York's New York City may have different rules than New York State does as opposed to what's approved so if you can just send me a photo I will have it investigated
Mm-hmm. Okay.
because this one um is um within the New York State DOT specs as per a state highway
Right.
so they will accept this one.
Okay but I would imagine that on a west side highway that you New York City's still in New York State.
We. Yeah it's not New York State DOT. Yeah it's not in New York State.
Yeah but the other one and the other one.
DOT rules if as long as DOT will approve it I'm happy to
Yeah it's kind of stickler.
take and suggest it I just wanna make sure.
Right.
Okay so I know that I know that we will.
Okay. We'll see if I can find it and it's not all.
Does ours have to say Second Avenue North?
Well okay extra and have it say something else any any of interest?
If you look if you go to this website Val Valmont Structures and you know there's a bunch of different ones underneath it too you can't really see them but.
Power grid. I guess it will but the bottom line is the the change order we're looking at is a significant dollar.
Yeah. Yeah it's gonna be about thirty thousand dollars worth of change order.
That's a big change order.
That's for the traffic light?
The difference between what the galvanized steel is and what the decorative is.
Well it's important.
This galvanized and pardon me and 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 this is a little bit so we discussed it before the galvanized steel is really that ugly?
Yes the silver.
Yeah it is in my opinion.
Well why do we accept it in the first place?
I don't think we got I don't know I don't think we thought of it.
They originally they they told us that that was the only thing that we could go because it was due New York State DOT.
What was? What was the sign Joe what was that material that that there was an issue about that material too it was like a black shiny the sign on the corner by this high school in the parking lot wasn't there an issue about yeah my bell wasn't there an issue about the.
The new electronic sign that it was gonna be shiny black instead of.
Yeah it was an issue about the metal there too or what was that metal do do I don't remember I had a I had a Google it's I had no.
Oh yeah yeah no that was the
That's something different.
Yeah yeah that was the um matched the copper but it was a copper it was something else there's another color taupe.
Either way okay doesn't matter but it's different 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 metal.
Yeah. Okay we'll we'll try to find.
I mean this is gonna be pretty visible you know.
I mean that's the other thing is it's it's in a pretty prominent spot but it's it's a much pricier thing so originally uh we were told that uh the shiny steel was all that we could get and then uh somebody came across the fact that it's on other state highways and why couldn't we go for something decorative?
Is there any?
The shiny steel will look horrible.
I'm just curious is there a shiny steel anywhere nearby?
Yeah probably at the top of the Quirky Hill.
Yeah along like the iconic.
Yeah no 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 I think at the top of the hill.
Top of the hill is a shiny is a.
Oh shiny.
Or or is it or are those just wires that go across do those have arms even?
Uh those don't have poles I think they're wires it's just wires.
Yeah they just have wires yeah those just have wires.
Um I'll have to figure out where they are.
Not looking too obstruct but uh like the galvanized I'd want for the galvanized steel but um thirty thousand dollar.
Well we're we're not gonna decide right now anyway cuz we're just gonna see if there's something else that we can do.
Well it is thirty thousand dollars but it's gonna be there for a long time and it's.
God willing.
And it's the kind of center of downtown.
Yeah I'm not just I again I just I'm curious but I I don't I'm not a architect or a city planner in case you didn't know.
I didn't know.
Alright so what do we have to prove this tonight?
No 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 we're not we're not going to then because Lisa was gonna look to see if there's something.
Other options?
Other options.
We just have to find the picture.
Okay.
But you think of it I I don't think it's gonna make a huge difference one way or the other I I wish I could tell you that they were ready to put it in.
Yeah exactly exactly I don't think so.
But we're not.
We do we said we're not doing this.
My gosh.
Hmm no we're not doing the top not not the light part I'm sorry yeah so not this just the pole without the without this
Right let me.
just that with with the black one but it's black I'm gonna file it.
We're gonna pay thirty thousand dollars so it's black not silver.
That's a different design.
It's a different style.
But I wonder if we can just paint the other one.
No it'll chip off it'll look awful there'll be upkeep on it. I'm gonna find the picture.
Okay. We pay thirty thousand dollars with the lights on it too.
Right why how much more no cuz that looks nice that looks nice.
Yeah I would take it. Yeah it looks nice with the lights yeah.
I don't I don't think they have the lights.
Which one?
Let's find out.
Big picture so you know it has just the regular like the streetlights on it.
We can ask John.
This is above my pay grade in terms of design of well it looks nice and stuff I mean it looks nice to me.
It does look nice to me. But it may not match the other way.
Yeah I.
Yeah hi.
Kaz just to make just to make no no actually I wanna ask some quick question you I just got a text you guys closed the road again?
I heard my name.
Come here.
I just showed up I just there two minutes ago I just was with them out there.
Got open it. I just got a text from ASOPS it said they closed the road again.
We have this conversation but we're gonna proceed before nine o'clock.
Yeah I told I told Billy and he's here yet but I'm just still gonna go out I'll see. Yeah, I told I told Billy and he's here yet, but I'm just still gonna go out, I don't think. Can you get up and check it?
But not so not that, just the, well, maybe one of those.
Well, no.
Like I think we should have a light on it, but it's very cool. Alright, and then John, I was. I need to ask you about that. Yeah, when we start packing, we'll be needing to go to this light, so. So Adam wrote to me, that's the general idea, but without the light fixture on top.
Yeah, but I think was.
But I have the light fixture.
This was the this was the one that Adam sent back and what I did was I forwarded to Tina
Right. Mm hmm.
to make sure it's New York State DOT approved and she wrote back, that's why I sent you all the stuff when I started looking at it, so this is the
Right.
the Valmont, I think it's called, right?
Yeah, but we have to have two, DOT requires us to have two traffic lights, not one.
Mm hmm.
Yeah, usually two heads.
Right. Has to have two heads, so we can't use this.
Doesn't, has to have more than two heads.
Yeah, it has two heads going.
No, 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 so it's the one that we just sent only has one.
One direction.
Oh, okay, yeah, but still, that's.
It has to have two.
Yeah, I think this is, I think the armage on these are different because you're gonna need one arm arm going that directs uh
Need two of these.
Greeley, north Greeley coming into the intersection, so it's like really a four headed, I don't know if there's two poles or not, I just went by the pole cuz this is what was said.
Right, so where is, yeah.
Right.
Yeah, but so is is.
When you said two poles, you're saying so therefore it may be double? There might be a double cuz I'm trying to think how it works, it might be one pole with one that goes out and arm, I gotta look at. Double, double is order, is there any for it?
Yeah. No, no, that's another arm over here, see? So is the change order just for this one or for the what we need?
Yeah, cuz I think.
The two arms.
I'll find out.
Yeah, there is two arms on this pole.
Okay.
The change order.
There's two arms on this pole, but I gotta look at the layout of the pole itself because I just went by when they sent this
Please.
is this company and this pole, New York State DOT approved, that's all I needed to know before we started doing it because when did he just send this proposal for the layout, Friday?
Yeah, I mean maybe. Yeah.
Cuz Leo did it in.
No, this is March eighth, stated.
March eighth, yeah, it was last Thursday.
Got it.
We have a lot of stuff going on since the past, isn't it?
Is that what it was? Yeah, we've been having this conversation for a very long time.
So if we if we went with the other pole, would we be looking at two poles?
I gotta look at the layout, I gotta.
Right.
It's it's one, it's one main pole, but it would have two arms.
It's like there's two arms on it.
The two arms, the other one would have two arms too.
Yeah.
Yeah, they all have it because it I gotta look at the setup of the turning lane light and what how many heads are in each direction, I gotta get look at the plan itself, that it's the same.
The the change order isn't just for materials, though, it also covers labor and equipment, why is it, why?
It doesn't. I know it's zero for that.
Yeah, I think it's zero for it, I think it's just the change in the cost of the pole itself.
It's what am I?
Labor, equipment, so it is just materials.
What is this?
So is it, I mean expected.
It's just it's just going through everything.
Yeah, first it's called Deco Tracker Pole, yeah, the Verde change order follows twenty four thousand dollars. Does that mean it's the labor, the labor is the same?
Uh huh.
So everything else is zeroed out, all the form shift differential, cuz the footings are the same and what I also wanna check though is.
Everything, yeah.
See.
It's. See, it's only a materials cost.
Okay, but it's just what is the, but I know I can look at that page, but what is this page?
Alright, let me. I also. Should we wait to see whether or not Trump starts a trade war and we can figure out if we can wait and the price will go down?
This page is the change order. This actually has.
Steel?
It's not gonna be that simple.
Everything gonna go up.
This has materials, labor and equipment.
Yeah, so how how come you, I'm sorry, so why is it fourteen hundred dollars additional for labor?
So it does happen.
Yeah, but it does on the back, that's why I'm a little bit confused right now, because labor here is zero, total labor, zero.
Indeed.
So you see, John?
Yeah, but he's putting on here what you truly truck, I'll find out whether it's different the way they hang, I don't know the way these assembly, because I gotta find out, what I wanna look at also is is. We've found those, you don't want to.
And can you also find out if we can get it for the same price with the lights on top?
Though we don't know if we want the lights, they're not matched, you have the lights.
Well, but I'm sure you hear different options.
Yeah, I also wanna find out if he's got, if they if it this comes with the box, the control cabinet that matches it. I'll verify.
No, because the.
So again, it's a control box too.
Yeah, cuz I don't know if this included, like my whole thing usually comes with the pole with the control cab, cuz it makes no sense to put an aluminum
Right, right, right.
control, regular control cab that's down there and everything else is. There's no, there's no other material options other than the non galvanizing steel with and then this.
Nothing in between this thing.
So it's not exciting. No, cuz we, cuz what happens is you get the standard New York State DOT pole and then after that you start getting into this, now, the company that made, I sent, because it was this picture, I sent it over, she said this Valmont's approved but when I went on the website, I started clicking through these other pictures, there's other variations of that. Let's do a homework instead of sitting here dwelling on this. You know what I mean, yeah, I can find out, let me find out about the cabinets, I'll get you exactly what he's talking about here and I'll ask him why it's additional it could be because the way they connect to it, I I wanted to get an answer, like the way these arms connect to them might be different, I don't know.
Yeah, but what's interesting is that on this page, it's total labor is nothing, total equipment, zero.
Yeah, that's from the ELQ.
Materials is only twenty four, twenty four, ten percent overhead, ten percent profit, and that's how you end up with the twenty nine, so I'm a little confused just.
Let's just get those, instead of dwelling on it, let's get these answers and bring it back.
Okay. Very good. Oops. We need to make sure that when we do the referrals, it is on the latest version of the law from the true just sent us, okay. Okay, ready to go?
Yeah. We'll adjourn our uh work session, work session to the town board meeting, stat.
Work session. All favor, second all favor, aye?
Aye.
Okay.